Nick is gonna have to leave, so you'll have to work.
Yep, I understand.
He's got that. Ready?
Good evening and welcome to the West Branch City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Julia Deemer.
And my name is Janee Murray. Together we will serve as your NCs for the evening. At this time, we ask that all the folks in the audience turn off any electronic devices.
Okay, and tonight's forum is co-sponsored by the West Branch Times and the Brick Arch Watering.
The West Branch Times organized the forum, solicited ideas for questions from a variety of people, gathered input, and sought out volunteers to serve on the question committee as a moderator and more.
The Brick Arch Watering, of course, is providing a backdrop for the event and is supplying refreshments for the evening's activities. To accommodate the students' involvement, watering owners John McNutt and Eileen Landy agreed to go dry and serve only non-alcoholic drinks tonight. Thank you, John and Eileen.
Special thanks goes out to Nick Schimmern, who brought the West Branch Community Access WBCATV, Channel 5 camera equipment, and helped set it up, and Bill Krom for operating the cameras tonight.
We'd also like to thank the West Branch High School staff, Claire Keeney, Doug Cummings, and Amanda Kues for helping us find students and help with tonight's forum, giving those students some hands-on experience in the election process.
We also want to thank the members of our question committee, Felicitator Mike Owens, members Sally Peck, Julie Bridges, Kevin Hatfield, and Wayne Bronholdts.
There are five people running for the two seats on the West Branch City Council. Incompet Jim Oates, appointed City Council members Dick Stowman and Mary Beth Stevenson, and challenger Cory Kessler. We wish to thank the candidates for coming tonight and participating in this forum. We hope that their answers will educate us as the voters aside whom they wish to have represent them on the council.
To begin, each candidate is invited to spend up to two minutes talking about why they want to serve on the city council. After that, we begin with questions created by the question committee.
Members of the audience are invited to share ideas for questions, which the question committee will also consider. You'll find pens and paper on tables to your left.
Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Once each candidate has had their turn, they may have an extra minute to respond to something said by the other candidates. We ask that the candidates keep their responses focused on ideas and issues, and that they respond by speaking to the audience rather than their opponents. Ms. Deemer will use cards to alert the candidates when they are down to their last thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and then when time runs out.
We'll also rotate who goes first, so question number one will go to the candidate seated on the far left, and question number two will go to the candidate seated on the left, and so on.
We anticipate wrapping up between 8:30 and 9:00 PM. And now, let's begin.
Okay, can you all hear me on this mic? Nope. Just need to be a little closer. Testing, testing. Okay, so we're gonna start off with the introductory questions, so you may, first you have two minutes to tell us who you are.
My name's Cory Kessler. I am running for city council. As a member of the community, I was born and raised here, and the experiences that I grew, that I got growing up in a small town, has developed me as a person to who I am today. Some of those benefits of growing up in a small town is the hard work attitude, the personable levels of relationships in dealing with people on a one-to-one basis. With that, I want to bring my leadership skills and my strong business sense to, back to the community and help facilitate growth, opportunities, and working with the citizens for the betterment of our community.
My name is Tim Oaks. I'm running for my second term on the West Branch City Council. I've lived in West Branch for over fifty years. I was employed by the city for thirty years, so I have a good working knowledge of what it takes to run a city, and I just feel that I didn't get enough accomplishment first term, so I'm gonna take a chance and run for my second term in hopes that we can put things together and maybe have a better working relationship with other members of the council and the rest of the community.
My name is Tim Shields. I am running for council this year because, well, I've lived here now for nine years. I have young children in the community. I have served on the Parks and Rec Board now for two years, and I just really think the town deserves the opportunity to grow and, you know, invite other people, families, into our community, bring more revenue into the community. I think we have great small businesses here, and I would really like to see more come in, as well as the ones here continue to strive and, you know, just really, really try to, really wanna see things for the kids. I want to see a lot more opportunities for our youth in this community. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the community center, and I really think that's gonna be a really, really big, nice issue and a nice addition to the community. And I feel like if I can be on the council here, I will have more opportunities to make these things happen.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Mary Beth Stevenson, and also I'm running for city council, as you know. And I've been living in West Branch for a little over three years now, but I did also grow up in a small town, and so I'm really interested in kind of the small-town life, you know, just the pace of life, the people, community values, all of that is really important to me. And, you know, above all, I'm really interested in seeing West Branch grow and develop as a community that attracts families and retains folks here in town. Really interested in seeing how we can support our local businesses to help them thrive and succeed, and again, just as been mentioned, really seeing how we can improve the quality of life for everyone who lives here in West Branch, providing opportunities for kids, you know, folks of all ages, and just really looking at how I can sort of be a partner to those in the community to convey ideas and opinions back to our city government and kind of be a conduit for that.
Hello, my name is Dick Stowman. I've lived here for fifty-seven years. I've seen a lot of different things happen in those fifty-seven years. The interstate was built, new school buildings were built. The city just keeps progressing, and this is what we need to see and work on. Keep pushing forward, get more athletic fields, get more places for the kids to play. We also, I raised four kids, that's why I know what it's like to go through sports in all those years, traveling all over, and you go out there and you rake the diamonds to make sure that they can play that night, and you do a lot of things extra. I also worked with Jim Wheeler to get the Booster Club started back up, and him and I got that done, and it's progressing very good now. There's a lot of projects that are gonna be coming up for the city of West Branch, and we gotta watch how we do these. We've already got a lot of debt, and we need to control that a little bit, make sure that we can afford what we're doing. Young kids will have to pay for that in the future. We've kept taxes down for the last few years, and that really helps, and the downtown is really developing now, so we need to help that get better and better. And National Park is a real thing to help this community go better.
Okay, the first question is gonna go to Jim Oaks. How would you use your role as a councilperson to demonstrate leadership in the community, and how would you build consensus? How would you use your role as a councilperson to demonstrate leadership in the community and build consensus?
I'm not sure that I've really heard.
Okay, that's fine.
The PA system doesn't really do much for you, it's kinda blurry.
As a councilperson, how would you demonstrate your leadership, and how would you go about building a consensus?
Well, one of the things that I've tried to pride myself on is I listen to what my constituents have to say. If we have a problem that arises, and I receive calls, I always answer my phone. I never pass up a chance to visit with a constituent at the grocery store, on the street, at the park, wherever. So, I like to thank my constituents can always knock on my door, call my telephone, send me an email, whatever, and I'm anxious to hear what they have to say.
I'd say, you know, a lot like Jim just said, I think a big, big way that I would basically acquire the people's opinions is, you know, invite them to contact me personally, you know, and then use my, the fact that I'm not born here, born and raised, I think I really bring an unbiased opinion, so I'm very open-minded to anybody's suggestions and ideas. So, I feel that I'm very approachable, and in that sense, that I would like people just to come to me, and I will ask them, you know, different peoples in the community, different business owners in the community, for their opinions, and then, you know, apply that and, you know, go to bat for that, for the community at our meetings for different projects. I think that's probably the best way that I would handle it, and just really put myself out there to know that, don't be afraid to come up and ask me or give me your opinion, because I do value your opinion, because it is, the small community is our community. It's not just the city council's community, so I think that's how I would provide that service.
So, definitely, again, agree with what has been said already, and I guess just really want to emphasize that I think good leadership on an elected official position like this, good leadership is really, listening is essential to that. You have to listen to people, and not just your constituents, but, you know, the folks that are on city staff, the people that you're serving with. I just think it's really important to have something of a cooperative approach, you know. I think we're in a small town, we need to work together. It's really important to try to understand differences and try to determine how we can work together to make things happen. I think that's really important. I think if you take a very, you know, it doesn't serve any good to be defensive, you really need to just take that collaborative working approach, and that's really kind of how I would try to lead within the city council, and also how I would try to build consensus within the city council as well.
Yeah, there's been some good comments, but the rest of them, we need to get more people involved in groups and stuff, and discuss things, and work towards different things. Two or three can't do it, it takes quite a few. There's always projects to do in this town. I think, are they gonna sweep the street tomorrow morning, or was that today? I don't know, I see in the paper, but that's something everybody can jump on and do. Getting Main Street fixed up pretty nice, and we need to keep it that way. The school, it's working very nice right now. I'm proud of what the school board and the superintendent are doing, they're fulfilling some big wishes, and this also makes our kids a top-notch place to go to school, and this will draw more people into this town when we have a good school and the good teachers and things like that. We've got a new water tower, we've got a new lift station that's supposed to go into effect next week, I think. There's big debt there, but those two items are fixed now, so we shouldn't have to worry about that expense for a while. And we're moving forward, and we need some more businesses. We've got some buildings that are empty yet, and we need to get those filled and get products moving out of those.
So, with demonstrating leadership, in my current position, I'm a manager, I manage sixteen employees. It's my job every day to lead them, and I have sixteen employees that want to work with me because I have an open-door policy, in the fact that if you have a problem and issue, I'm always willing to listen and help understand where they're coming from, what my experiences have been, and help solve the problem. The benefit of me growing up in a town, I know a lot of the older generations, and they can relate, just because I've grown up with them, they've taught me life lessons that, that's something you can't take for granted. And with a young child in the school system, I'm also active in coaching, and being a member of the community, I'm always out, you know, my family's eating in town, or buying their gas in town, or shopping in town, and that's how I build consensus, is just having an open-door policy and the fact that I'll be available anytime, just like my job. My phone rings in the middle of the night, I answer it. If there's an issue, call me. One thing that I'd like to do to help make it easier on the community to get in touch with me would be to set a certain time during the week, whether it's Monday night, Wednesday night, Friday, whenever, I'd set a dedicated time that I'd be in the council chambers from, you know, six to seven, seven to eight, eight to nine, and have that open door. If I'll be there, if you guys have any issues, come talk to me. That's the best way. If there's an issue, you know, an idea, bring it to me, and I'll go, you know, I'll go to bat for the community and just use my relationships and my leadership to help the community.
Okay, Mr. Shields, you get the next question? We're gonna start moving into questions with a little bit more meat to them now. What is your view of library expansion? Is it necessary to expand? And if you do believe it's necessary to expand, how should it expand?
The library expansion, I do think it's, I would like to see it expand a little bit. I've been in there, my kids use the library programs regularly, and I think they're great programs. It is a little, it's small, and I mean, even though it is a newer building, it's getting a little dated. I certainly would love to see it expand. I think the community, the council, the library, and the school, I think we could all really get a nice working relationship. There's a property there, I think if we could open up those lines of communication, again, with the school, with the library. There's land there, I know that the bus barns are there, but I think there's ways, maybe we could work together to move the bus barns, expand the library to where those are. With the buses being there, and the library, and the school, I always, there's always that little fear of some, a child walking from a library to the school with a lot of traffic. Those buses are big, they're difficult to see around, kids are small, so, you know, I think there's a safety issue there as well, and again, I think if we work together, we could expand it, I think, with all the, all parties involved, like I said, the school, the library, and, and, you know, I just, I really think it's a good program, and there's so many other programs for the libraries, you know, nationwide, that I think West Branch would be, would be able to facilitate and really thrive and see our children grow by expanding the library.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I definitely think the library expansion is critical. I think that libraries provide so much for our communities. We, you know, we're library supporters in our family, and I've just been extremely impressed by the quality of staff at the library, just the programs they offer. Kids are really into it. When we've gone to the activities for kids, just really feel very strongly that that's something that's important for our community. Now, when the library was going through the visioning process, it really was very clear that the community was also in support of expanding and enhancing the library. And interestingly, the way the kind of workshops and sessions went, people really wanted to see the library expand in their current location. I mean, the community built the library not so long ago, it's in a really great location, close to downtown, and I was just very interested to see that there really was this overwhelming support for staying in that location. And I know there are some things that need to get worked out with the school board, and I'm very hopeful that those issues can be worked out, and that we can come to some consensus and really find an approach that works both for the community, who clearly really wants this project to happen, and something that also benefits the schools as well. I think the, there's such a natural partnership that is, that can grow between a school and a library, there's just, it's a win-win solution for everyone. Now, I've also kind of heard that the debt is a little bit of an issue, but I really believe we're at thirty percent of our statutory debt limit in West Branch, that's really, we can go a little bit more. I don't think we have to worry about our debt right now, we need to invest, and we will have a very strong return on investment if we can really make this happen, so.
Yeah, Nick does a wonderful job of running that library, and his staff's very good, too. I'd like to, it should've been built bigger from the start, they should've put the basement in, everybody approached him and constantly trying to talk him into doing that. Still possible, by going from where the building is now, putting a basement in there, out to the sidewalk in front, and go, have them two stories with an elevator or something in it. Financing-wise, there's possibilities, a fire station will be done here next year, they could use that one cent option tax to finance that library addition or increase the size on it. Kids all have computers anymore, so they use that up there a lot to get some stuff with their computers. I don't know if the bus barns could be, the old one could be tore down, and the other one, another one built there, big enough, or what, but there's room. They're gonna have to make more parking if they do build on there, some more room for the kids, make us just certain sidewalk. Those buses parked there during the day is kind of a dangerous situation there, too. Kids going over there, or playing outside and running behind the buses, I've seen this before, and so, let's see as we can get something done.
My view on the library expansion is, it's an investment in our future. The majority of the time that I'm there is after school, during the weekend, I see a lot of kids, and that's the benefit of having a library, and the fact that it's an investment. We have to look for a future, but not only do I see the kids, I see adults using it, too. One of the best parts that I've witnessed at the library is, one of the library staff was helping an older generation citizen use an iPad. They were struggling with how to connect, what, how to get through the iPad, and it was just a great thing. So, as far as expansion, yeah, if we can do it smart, I see benefit in it. It's just, how do we go about doing it? You know, it would have to be, if it's in its current location, we have to work with the school, and help them help us, and really focus in on how to do it with a budget conscious, and make it right for both the city and the school.
I'm glad that the library expansion has gone in the direction that it has. The meetings that I attended, the majority of the people thought the expansion should take place at the present site, which I agree with. I'm hoping that the library can expand to the north and maybe not disrupt the school bus barn at the same time, but yet add enough square footage that we won't have to worry about expansion again for a number of years, and possibly add double or triple the parking that we have there now, so that when the need arises, we have plenty of parking. I like, I like the location of the library, I've liked it ever since it was located there. I think its proximity to the school is real important, and it allows the students to use the library, especially after school, so I hope that when we get right down to putting everything together, that we can expand right there and continue to offer a good service as the library goes now.
Okay, the next question, we'll start off with Mary Beth. Are you satisfied with the industrial park TIF program, or would you modify it?
Well, clearly, the TIF issue is pretty heated right now. What I will say is, I advocate a very cautious approach to the use of TIF, tax reimbursement financing, in West Branch. I think it is a tool that can be used for community development, but I do think that it's something that we need to take very cautiously. You know, I think we need to really kind of think about the original intent of TIF, which was to encourage development in underutilized areas, and I think that, you know, whatever we do, we need to just be sure that we're kind of sticking with that. And, you know, I think, I will think very carefully about any, you know, projects or programs that we consider through TIF. I just, I want to make sure that it's not negatively benefiting the community in any way, and I also want to make sure that we're being very fair to our community in terms of not just giving handouts to corporations that may not need it. That said, I really think that we need to encourage growth and development in West Branch. So, it's, it's an issue, you know, that is very polarizing, but I think that it's just really important to take a very level-headed approach and talk to the community, kind of see where people are at. So, that's generally the approach that I will take.
Yeah, I was on plan, Sony, when they start this TIF program, for about quite a few years ago. I think P&amp;G's getting pretty close to being off of that, and some of the other ones are, so there's not that big a TIF program out there right now, and I think we ought to watch what we do from now on. Industrial Park is building up pretty fast, and if we can get by, but not given that tax reimbursement financing, we'd be better off, because we got plenty of projects right here in town that we need to get done without that. I think Caterpillar isn't asking for it, and so, actually, only we chopped theirs off, so that one's gone. So, the school ought to be getting some more money now, as well as the town and the rural people, so I need to watch it, and control it a little better than I did in my form.
Yeah, definitely, in the future, I'd like to see it be controlled, monitored, like Dick said. It seems that we've got ten, P&amp;G, Axiona, where they came in, provided employment for several people in our community. However, you know, with Axiona, the wind turbine energy, it's not booming like it used to, so now, we have basically, from what I heard, ten employees up there, and we gave them the TIF, and now, we cut it off. How does that look in the future for people to come in as a city saying, hey, we want to work with you, we want to work with you? to work with you, we want to work with you, and then to cut the TIF off and say, you know what, we're done, we want it back? How are we going to promote future businesses coming in if that's our approach? We have to have a good working relationship with the business, with the business owners, to ensure it's a benefit for not only them, but us. I think West Branch provides, you know, a great employment workforce, and we're not necessarily keeping the employment numbers in town as high as I'd like. What I see is a lot of people coming in on Highway Six, getting off the interstate, going out to P&amp;G. That's really hard for me to see, because we're not keeping the jobs local. And here, the city's turning around and giving them the TIF, but they're not keeping that workforce in town, and that's disappointing to see. So when we're negotiating and we're discussing, I like a long-term plan of what their future is. Is it just a booming concept in the country, like wind, you know, solar, geo, whatever the thing is? We need to have a long-term plan and work with them in the future to ensure the future of the city.
I've always taken kind of a cautious approach to TIF. Anybody that's lived in West Branch for any length of time can look back and see that our industrial-type economic development's been kind of a rocky road. We think we've landed the big one, and then all of a sudden, they're leaving, they're closing their doors, and their promise is a big workforce, and it's really a skeleton force. So my approach has been on the cautious side. I've never been in favor of using TIF for anything but industrial-type economic development. And I think as some of these TIF debts are retired, that we ought to take a real cautious look whether we return to that. I'm not sure that our industrial park in the future, a lot of it's taken up by just warehousing. I'd like to see some other businesses similar to, well, maybe not similar to Altorford, but those that employ twenty people, and they come in and they don't even ask for TIF. They just come in and want to be part of our town, they like our location and everything, so. So my look at TIF is, is take the cautious approach.
When it comes to TIF, I actually just started doing more research on what TIF is and what its best uses are. I like the board, I mean, like everybody up here, I think you do definitely have to take a cautious approach to it. To me, in a nutshell, the way I see TIF is TIF is basically, you're gambling, you're basically, you're taking a gamble, and you're gambling on something that you hope to bring return into your community. So, yes, I think TIF is a good thing. However, I truly believe it needs to be researched. When a business asks to use TIF dollars, I think we as a community need to come together and really decide, hey, is this the best way, is this the best company to use this kind of money on? Because, you know, essentially, it is our future, and I think, you know, we, and I think by doing maybe some types of forums, more open discussion when it comes to these types of issues, especially when it involves this type of money. So, yeah, I think TIF is good if it's researched and it's well-thought-out and, you know, and it's, and we really investigate it and proceed with cautious.
Let me actually use my one minute. I just, I want to add a little bit regarding the Axiona discussion, and I also want to mention that Altorford did actually approach the city about asking for a TIF, and they were actually told no. So that conversation did happen, it just, it didn't proceed in their favor. But with Axiona, you know, they didn't hold up their ends of the bargain. They were required to have one hundred and ten jobs in, within the city, and they didn't maintain that. But not only did they not keep those jobs, they also didn't keep the lines of communication open with the city of West Branch. They were a very strong community partner at one time. I mean, they, my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, my understanding is that they did a lot, they were very active, they talked to city staff quite frequently, but that communication just totally fell apart, and they did nothing to say, you know, we really want to do our best to kind of get those jobs back. We really didn't have any indication of that kind of good-faith effort coming from Axiona. So I think that really kind of added to the decision of West Branch to, to cut off that agreement, so. All I wanted to add, just to clarify.
Does anybody else want a one-minute rebuttal on that? The next question goes to Dick. Are you in favor of a West Branch Community Center? And if you are, what are you envision being in that community center?
Yes, I'm in favor of a West Branch Community Center. Senior citizens don't have a place to go play cards or exercise and do different things, and also, the kids need some more play areas where they could, in the wintertime or summertime, they could be inside doing different things, get more veteran sports if they have more places to exercise and try to do different things. We don't really have a place big enough for a wedding, a big wedding or anything like that. We need that for this community. We just need a community center, and I'm sure it's going to cost a lot of money, but it's something we're gonna have to pull the belt on and go, do it. We can bond for other things, we can bond for that, too. So that's my opinion, and let's help get it done.
Coming from an active family, I'm all for a rec center. I think that's one thing that we lack. My previous location was Ames, Iowa, and you could go to about one in seven places where you can get exercise, play basketball, walk in the track, workout, and they were all city or school-funded buildings. So I'm all for a community center. I think it's a great idea. I think it'll promote future growth. It'll be a positive for the community to bring new, younger families in as a benefit. Inside, you know, I'd like to see indoor basketball, an indoor track, so, and then outdoor would be ball diamonds, baseball, softball. I'd also like to see a reception hall or a community area where the community can gather, whether it be wedding receptions, graduation parties, retirements, whatever we can do to provide a facility that brings the community together. With that, I'd like to build it where we can expand. Right now, we might not necessarily have the funds to do everything we want, but if we build for the future and construct it in phases down long-term, we can get what we want, and it'll benefit everybody within the community. There's a lot of talk about a pool. If we build it and we get revenue generated through our community center, when it's making money and it's self-efficient, we could look at a pool. Other small towns around us have pools, it would be a great part of it. Back in the nineties, my days were spent at the golf course with the pool, and everybody was out there, all the families, kids, and it was a great experience for the community, and I think we could bring that to, back to the city.
I think a community center is a great asset to shoot for, for our community. I think that it's important that we explore, you know, all the financing options that we can so that we can build as much of it in the first phase as we possibly can afford so that we can begin to phase in the use of it so that the whole community can benefit by it. I just think that, you know, we've talked about this community center, rec center, however you want to pronounce it, for a number of years, and I think the main holdup on the whole thing is strictly in the financing. So I think the thing that we need to explore more than anything are the grants that are available to help us build it, and any of the other aspects of financing that we need to nail down before we get started on this construction. And I agree with Corey that we need to set this building up so that if we can only afford to build a third of it at the beginning, then it just falls into place to put the second third and the final third into place. So I think that it's going to take a lot of planning, it's going to take a lot of finance options, but I think as a community, if we pull together, we can make it work.
Yeah, I too, in full favor of a community center. I think in order for West Branch to grow, I think a community center is very, almost essential. What it opens up, so many more opportunities for our community, for our kids, and it makes West Branch a more inviting community. Speaking, you know, as Corey mentioned about ball diamonds and fields, I think it would be great. You know, as being on the park and rec department right now, I know that we don't have enough space for our youth sports. We really don't. It seems like we have a lot of different parks. But, you know, when it comes to youth basketball, I mean, we just started to cave through two youth basketball, two years ago, I started it, but every Friday night for four weeks, I lugged in my own personal basketball hoops into the all-purpose room because we didn't have gym space. So every Friday night, I would go in there and I'd break them all up, and then I'd bring them, you know, break them down Saturday morning after we were done. You know, that gym would be great, because then we can use that. You know, yes, we do have a lot of gym space, but we have a lot of activities in the winter with our high school and school sporting, you know, sporting events. So we don't always have the opportunity to use all the gym space for our youth, our youth of the community. Yes, a track, I think that would be great. I think we could really, everybody in community could utilize a track, you know, at all ages, we can get programs, you know, we all need to stay in shape, want to stay in shape, but it gets cold in Iowa. So, you know, going outside is, it gets a little, it's kind of tough. And, yeah, reception hall, I just, I really think the community, it would bring, it would bring a lot of revenue also when you think that maybe we could host some tournament plays, say softball and baseball. That's going to bring other towns, other teams to come into our community, use our community, go eat at Herb and Lou's or buy snacks at the gas station. So, yeah, I think it would be a great asset.
Yeah, I am completely in agreement. I am very much in favor of a community center in West Branch, and I would definitely echo what I'm hearing, that it's not just a recreation center, but it's also a community center, you know, providing facilities, you know, space for community people to have meetings, you know, any type of events that we might want to offer, and really kind of offering a very diverse program offerings. I think a pool is important. I've heard that from a lot of people, that if you're going to have a recreation center, a pool is pretty essential, so I would be in favor of that. And, you know, overall, I would just look at the benefit that such a community center would bring to West Branch, just in term of, in terms of really helping to strengthen our economic backbone. I mean, we're really, we're losing a lot of money to Iowa City and surrounding areas in terms of, you know, programs, people going to other places for programs. And so I'd like to see that kept here in the town of West Branch. And I think we would really see a high return on investment if we did, if we did supply that to our residents and help to enhance quality of life, which is a really important thing for attracting the families and retaining those who are already here.
This goes back to Corey. Corey, long ago, before I had gray hairs, the city of West Branch had an Economic Development Commission, and they also had a Chamber of Commerce. Today, we're operating under West Branch Main Street. What we want to know is, what do you think the city's role should be when working with West Branch Main Street? Should they be funded, or should they be self-sufficient? Where do you see the city's role in that?
The city's role should be a partner in that, in the fact that the chamber, city, city chamber, Chamber of Commerce, that is essential in helping explore avenues to where, what businesses are out there. How do we not only bring new businesses in, but how do we work together with the businesses that we already have? It's just another means of communication with, through the city, to the city, with the city, West Downtown Main Street group. So the city, I wouldn't necessarily say it would be funded, but I would like to see a relationship, partnership, work with them to help facilitate future growth and future benefit for the businesses that are already here.
My four years on the city council, I think we've had, I would term an outstanding relationship with Main Street. I think they've done so many good things for our downtown that I just, I can't help but think that we've got such a good deal going with Main Street that I'm, in fact, not for any changes, I just like the way things are going. I know we have an interim person that's leading us right now, and we had a person before that that was really an avid leader of the downtown group. So I really think that our Main Street people have done us an outstanding job, and I really don't think, I've always been one that doesn't like to spend money fixing something that isn't broke, so I just, I think we should continue on the same path.
I think Main Street is a great program for West Branch. They do a lot of, a lot of things with the community to involve the community. I like that they already, the city council and Main Street already work very well together. I know, being on the Parks Commission currently, that, you know, we've always tried to work with McKinsey and Main Street, and they, they're very, they're very open to doing things as a group. And I think if we can just continue to keep the relationship very open and work to build each other, you know, don't compete, just work to build each other, and I don't know that necessarily the city should be, you know, should necessarily be funding. However, I don't see any reason why we can't help, help them get their own funding. So I think if we just continue to work with them, that would be, that would be another good asset for the, for the community and to continue what it's already, it's already going on with it, so.
Well, just kind of reiterating how strong of a partner I think Main Street West Branch is. I mean, Main Street is, it's the face of West Branch. You come into West Branch, you see the downtown area, that's a really important, you know, kind of best foot forward. And, you know, as such, I think that our partnership with Main Street West Branch is extremely important. Now, I'll be honest, I have never really thought about what it might look like to fund Main Street West Branch, but that doesn't mean I would necessarily be against it at all. I would really like to think about what that could mean. I think they do so much now to support the city, what could they potentially do with a little bit more? You know, I think, I would definitely be interested in kind of hearing a little bit more about what other communities do to support their downtown organizations and maybe hearing from other communities what the pros and cons are of providing that kind of support, if that kind of support is, if that happens in other places. So I guess I don't want to necessarily say one way or the other without kind of having a better understanding of what that cooperative relationship could look like, but I really think it's important for us to, to support that organization as much as possible. I think that, you know, downtown looks great right now, they've done a lot, and they're a great partner, so I'd like to see how better we can support that.
Yeah, since downtown group has started up, the downtown area's really started to shape up and looked a lot better. Yeah, there's a lot of projects are gonna, sidewalks are all going to be replaced again, and they need a few more streetlights, and the building, the wall was ready to fall out, it's being fixed, and Main Street's gonna try to help them get a grant. The gas station has been cleaned up, it looks a lot better. They're doing a lot of projects and helping people get financed. The museum over here, they got some money, it's being
Museum over here, they got some money, it's being fixed up. The buildings are starting to shape up and you need to get something in the Hoover House. Spent a lot of money there and that's just sitting there empty and we need to get something going in there. This man that owns this, it's sitting over there, he spent a lot of money to put this here and it's a major improvement to the community. He needs to be pat on the back several times for doing it. We wouldn't have a place like this to have these type of things, it wasn't for him. Let's tell the people when you go in their business places, we like what's happening over town and we need to help you if we can. So keep looking around and helping.
All right, this next question goes to Jim. Jim, what do you see as the most pressing needs for the city right now? In other words, what keeps you up at night?
Well, I think one of the things that the city, and I, and I am not criticizing, I, I think the city's done a good job in the past, but I think the biggest job the city has is to stay up with the growth. You know, as housing developments take place and homes are added and citizens come to our town, then the inner structure has to be brought up to date, you know, water mains, sewer expansions. Then you have to expand the waste treatment plant, water plant. And Public Works has to add equipment to stay up with their needs. So I think you have to look a little bit farther than day after tomorrow. You have to look down the road a, a decade ahead and see where we're heading and some of this equipment, stuff that looks high-priced today is gonna be much more high-priced a decade from now. So I think budgeting items have to be put in place long before you actually...